All right, it is six o'clock and we will go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting. The time is six o'clock. Ms. McGrew, will you call the role, please?
Mayor Bill Hastings. Mayor Pretend Chris Harris. Councilmember Frank Carroll. Councilmember Janet Court. Councilmember Duran Dowdell.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Jordan Stockdick.
Yeah.
You have a question?
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Tim Barker with the Katy Community Fellowship Church. After that, we will have Corporal Pena from the Katy Police Department lead us in the U.S. pledge and the pledge to the Texas flag. Pastor Barker?
Hold on, ma'am, I'm not seeing him as a promoted attendee just yet.
Councilman Dowdell, would you mind leading us in an invitation tonight?
Certainly. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity for us to come together and thank you for our city. We thank you for all the good blessings in this life. Or we ask for wisdom tonight and all the decisions that we make. And as always, Lord, we thank you for, for, for the blessings that you give upon each one of us. We pray for those who are in need and we pray for protection from this virus that's out there in our world today. Lord, we ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand. The pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you Corporal Pena and thank you Councilman Dowdell. Moving on to item number three, public comments. I'd like to remind the audience that you have three minutes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda and that City Council cannot respond. Would anyone participating via Zoom or teleconference like to speak at this time? Please press nine to, or to raise your hand and you will be invited to speak. When you are, please state your name and your address.
Mayor, there are no hands at this time.
Okay. Moving on to item number four, comments from the public on any item on the agenda. Anyone wishing to participate via teleconference, please speak at this time. Please press nine to raise your hand. And if you do speak, please state your name and your address.
I see no hands at this time, ma'am.
All right, having none, we will move on to item number five, bank statements summary and check register through May 31st, 2020. And this is for information items only. Moving on to item number six, consider the first extension of final plat approvals, which were approved by City Council on 7/22/2019. Item number six A, granting a three-year month extension through October 6th, 2020. A1. Young Ranch. West Firestorm Street Dedication Section 2. Six two is Young Ranch, Kingsland Boulevard, Street Dedication Section Three. Item number B, granting a six-month extension to January 6th, 2021. Item B1 is Young Ranch Section Six. And B2 is Young Ranch Section 10. Do I have a motion to approve the extension of final plats as presented on item six?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I just want to express one concern. When I spoke with Byron a few weeks ago, we talked about this. My concern, or, I mean, I've realized this needs to be done, but I want to make sure that some consideration is given to the people who live in Kingsland because Heritage Parkway is going to be getting worked on and then Kingsland's going to be worked on. We need to make sure that they have good access in and out of their neighborhood. I understand Kingsland goes all the way to Jordan Ranch. I just want to make sure that that's in the forefront of everybody's mind when they're blocking off streets and that type of thing.
Okay, and as far as I know, this has been taken care of. Mr. A Bear, would you like to respond to this?
Yes, ma'am, we, we understand Kingsland needs to be really looked at, but we need to go ahead and extend this to be able to, to continue with that dedication, uh, section. So, um, people in Young Ranch do have a way to get out to, uh, Jordan Road now, which is Old Woods Road. But we need to be able to get that east connection and Councilman Court's right, we need to get that and make sure that's on everybody's radar to get done.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, solid waste collection and recycling services contract. Uh, we will have a presentation at this time by the sanitation committee.
Do we do, do we do six B?
We did.
We did, it was all incorporated in six.
Okay. Good.
And I think we have a presentation.
They're pulling it up now, ma'am.
Okay, council. Mayor. Citizens. I wanted to, all right, so, um, as everybody knows, even two years ago, we had had it brought up that when our sanitation contract came up, that we would go and we would try to achieve some goals with, with a committee. And so we put forth a committee together. And those, those people on sanitation committees, myself, Lake Lucrenger, Becky Gruy, Andy, Teresa, States, Anosco Faly, Sarah Schwartz, and Melina Rucker. And the goals of that committee was to see if we could increase services, get a less confusing schedule, and lower cost. And our contract does run out August 31st, 2020. And I think that you'll see the committee really try to compile good data to give you an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, we have, I believe, both companies here tonight that can answer questions and can direct questions directly to them. But here's the findings that we have and here's how we, we came about that. First, we started with surveys and I'll let Elaine go ahead and talk about the surveys.
Good evening. As we did the surveys, we wanted to get the input from our citizens, so we did the survey process, the survey results and requests for proposal. We'll have all this for informational to or for our citizens and council. So we wanted to make sure engage our citizens, get their comments, their input. The surveys were mailed to the residents. The due date was April 13th, but even though some of the surveys came in after that day, all surveys were included. The survey questions that we were prepared was in a yes or no format to capture data. First question was satisfaction with service, satisfaction with schedule and willingness to pay for more services. As you can see, our survey results, we sent out 6,370, 70 surveys were mailed out. We received 2,549 and we had a response rate of 40%, which was really good. The first initial survey we have up here is actually all three. It's a service, schedule, and pay more service. And we're going to go in more detail on the each individual question that we asked on the survey question. So satisfied with service, we have it broke down Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, the areas that are served on those days and the responses that came in. We also have on the fourth, a column is the residents that did not specify trash day, so we put those in that column. Overall, satisfied, if you'll go back, satisfied with service was 78%. Satisfied was 21%. With 1% did not answer this question. Then we had satisfied with scheduling. Same thing Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the residents that didn't specify a trash day. We had 73% that were satisfied with the schedule, 20% unsatisfied, and 7% did not answer this question. Then we also asked for the increase in cost and services. Willing to pay for more services was 22%. Not to pay, willing, not willing to pay more was 71%. So then we went out for the, for the request for a proposal. We did the publication notice period. We had the vendor's request for the RFPs and the, all the proposals were received by May 20th, 2020, at two o'clock. We actually had seven companies request. We had six submissions received on May 20th. That was Best Trash Frontier, HHW Solutions, Republic, Texas Pride, and WC, WCA. On the evaluation process, we reviewed and scored the proposals. We checked references, interviewed qualifying proposals and submitted results to City Council. And now we're going to submit results to City Council. The sanitation committee scored each proposal individually and it was based on a 200-point scale. And it was based qualification experience was 50 points. Project methodology was 30, service yard facilities, equipment 15, customer service, public education 25 points, and fees and schedules 80 points. And this was based on their proposal. The four that met all the requirements was Republic, Texas Pride, WCA, and Frontier. One of those, we had, if you'll go back, each one of those, we had checked their references that they had supplied us. And also, we had interviews with each one of those and the interview questions came from each one of the individuals' proposals because each one was different.
Good evening. So based on the survey comments, three options were included in the request for proposals. The first option was what we currently have, once a week garbage, twice a month recycling, twice a month heavy trash, and quarterly super heavy trash. Option two was garbage once a week. We increased the recycling and the heavy trash both to weekly. And option three was increasing the garbage to two times a week with recycling and heavy trash one time a week. Excellent. We focused on option two. We wrote, since this increases the garbage and the, I'm sorry, since this increases the recycling and the heavy trash to once a week, we felt like garbage would be sufficient at one time a week. We took all five proposals and tabulated them. This page shows the cost and the next page shows the services. And based on that tabulation, we found that two proposals were comparable, Republic Services and Texas Pride. And it shows them side by side and highlighted in blue is option two. Texas Pride's price is $13.10 for residential. Republic Services at 1450. Both companies can serve, service the city in three routes and all services will be on the same day. So if your garbage is on Monday, so will your, your recycling and your heavy trash. Everything is once a week. For commercial accounts, Texas Pride is $20. Republic Services is $20.42. Both companies are including recycling in with the commercial accounts. Additional carts, Texas Pride is $2 per garbage, $2 for recycling. Republic Services is $3 for garbage and $3 for recycling. And both have 95-gallon carts. The city facilities, the roll-offs and the dumpsters, both companies are offering those at no charge to the city. The bi-annual cleanup that the city does with KKB, Texas Pride and Republic, both are offering that at no cost to the city. The rate adjustments for Texas Pride are based on the annual CPI increase and Republic Services shall increase annually 4% or CPI. Both companies have cameras and GPS on their trucks. Texas Pride has a live feed that's retrieved immediately. Republic Services averages three hours to retrieve the video. The truck collection type, Texas Pride is semi-automated with men. Republic Services is automated sideload. The customer service locations for Texas Pride is in Missouri City. Republic Services is Phoenix, Arizona, Indianapolis, Indiana, and Charlotte, North Carolina. Both companies offer the elderly disabled side door service. Customers that need smaller carts, Texas Pride can provide that. Republic Services will consider it. Recycling of glass, Texas Pride can do that. Republic Services says no. Special collections PayPal for abnormally large amounts of debris. Texas Pride and Republic both can accommodate that. Contracts lost before the expiration date, Texas Pride has two and Republic Services has none, only lost due to price. Both companies have agreed to donate $5,000 annually to keep Katie beautiful and another 5,000 to the city for educational purposes. The value, the evaluations were based on the scoring of the proposals, the interviews, and the references.
So the committee, we feel accomplished the goals that were set for most the increased services, less confusion schedule, and lowered cost. And we feel like we've got two companies that you guys can look at and if they can service our city, uh, the way we would like to have it serviced. We really like the function of, we put it out one day a week. That's it. We put you, we put you recycling, heavy trash, and garbage out one day a week. So it's not confusing. So questions, how we'll do the questions. First of all, if anybody from the public would like to ask questions, we'd like for you to ask those questions now. Then we'll leave council with our presentation, questions from the public. And then right after this, uh, meeting, we'll post this presentation on our website. So Becky, I think it's to raise your hand, what do you have to, what do you have to do?
Anyone wishing to comment or question at this time will need to either click raise hand in the Zoom chat window or press star nine if you have called in on the teleconference. And then afterwards, the presentation will be on the City of Katy website under public documents. Again, anyone wishing to speak on this item at this time, press star nine or raise your hand in the chat window. At this time, there's no raised hands.
All right, we will move on to item seven B, consider a resolution awarding solid waste collection and recycling proposal and authorizing administration to obtain a contract for services. Proposals are, were received on May the 20th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I
I'm sorry, Chris.
I just, mayor, just if I could have the floor for just a minute, uh, I just want to thank you for convening staff to form this committee. Uh, I also think this is probably the first time that a survey's gone out to all the residents asking for their opinion. So sure to appreciate that. I know that it took a lot of time from Elaine and Teresa and the rest of the staff, but thank you for doing that. The process looks like it was very fair and transparent. And interesting, 70% of residents were happy with the current once-a-week pickup. Unsurprising, big majority did not want the higher rate. And just a question for staff, did all the bids contain the CPI adjustment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's common.
Okay, and that, that was, every bid we received had that notation, correct?
Well, one of the bids was just for hazard waste, so that didn't, that didn't happen.
Right.
And and then also for, because the majority want the basic service of once a week regular trash pickup, but is there an option for HOAs, uh, neighborhood, be able to ask for additional service from each of these top two bidders?
Companies, both companies agree that if HOA or MUD wants to, to increase to twice a week pickup, that they'll work with those HOAs and those MUDs.
Okay, so, so the city's providing the basic pickup service for everybody across the city neighborhood. If you, if you all gather together through your HO area MUD, you could come back and ask for the additional service.
Correct.
Okay, well, uh, you know, and I know this, the lowest price is very important, but, uh, think looking at these bids, also recycling is important and we're upping the recycling from, on the bid. Texas Pride offers glass and I know that's a huge plus for people in the community that we've been asking over and over for class recycling. So I think that's important, having all the services on one day, easy schedule. Uh, and I noticed on the Texas Pride, uh, bid, there was a tipper on the back of the truck. So I think the community would be very happy with that. And again, we got some very, some quality bids and I appreciate everybody's time in doing this. Thank you, Byron. Please tell everybody thank you and, uh, recommendation from staff was Texas Pride by 200 and something points on the bid process, is that correct?
On bid process?
Yeah, yes, on the final rankings, Texas Pride was
That's how the ranking, yes, that's how the rankings came.
Yeah, that's how the rankings go.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused. Are we doing discussion now before the motion? Are we asking questions now? I, I'm a little confused on the, what the process is here.
You, I mean, you go ahead and, we can go ahead and ask questions because that's, we, we opened it up to the public and now we're going to open up the council.
Okay. Okay. I just got confused because the mayor had asked for a motion, so. So basically to, to, to repeat some of what Chris said, I think, I want to thank the committee also for, uh, the job that they did. I think they were very thorough and very fair. I do like the fact that the price difference overall in a year's time. I understand that it's going to, going with Texas Pride is going to save the, um, city or our residents around $360,000. Is that a right, a fair number, Byron?
That's not, uh, I mean, based on what they, based on the price that they gave plus the current residents that we have, it would be a savings of $360,000 across the whole city.
Oh, across the whole city, correct. Okay. Um, I also like the fact that, um, they have the semi-automated trucks with the men on the back because that means the trucks are only going to go down our streets once instead of having to go down one side and then coming back on the other side. Correct?
Kevin, I guess I, I can put that to the trash company, is that, is that a fact?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We just make one pass.
Let's make one pass. And the fact that you've got two men on the back, that's going to, we, we have a lot of problems with, uh, cars parking on the street, blocking the trash cans, a lot of construction workers. So, um, having the men on the back should help eliminate missed trash cans or trash pickups.
Correct, unless there's just something that's egregiously blocked that we'd be nervous about possibly scratching a vehicle, our, our guys should be able to clean up almost everything.
Okay. I have a, I guess, questions for Republic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I had the city secretary pull the history on your rates and you have increasingly, I, I guess I, I'd like to understand how, right now, we're at $17.87 a month and you're going, you're going all the way down in, uh, extra trash cans cost $3.62 and you're going all the way down to 1425 on the monthly rate and then $3 on the extra trash cans. So that 1450 rate is basically puts us back at, oh, somewhere around, um, 2016, 2017 rate. So how can you, how can you go that far back? I mean, that's a huge reduction in your rate.
Yes, ma'am, it, it is. Um, you know, with the, the changes in recycling, you know, we worked with the city and we appreciated all the help that, uh, we got from you all to get some of that relief from the China sword. You know, with, with bids around town, probably around the metro Houston area the past year, we've kind of seen some of the, uh, market pricing and we had to kind of make a decision on our end. You know, uh, you know, were we going to bid it, I guess, what we need or what we want to continue the relationship? We've had this contract for, you know, 20 years. At this rate for us, you know, the margins are very, very slim at the, you know, the 1425. Our thoughts were, you know, we just, we would like to continue the partnership and, and continue the relationship that we've built really over the past 20 years. I mean, on our side, do we, would we like the higher rate? Yes, ma'am, of course, you know, we would. But we, you know, we, we would, uh, we value the, uh, the partnership and the relationship we've made with the City of Katy, you know, for the past 20 years. So we decided to go back and, and give it a shot and see if, uh, we could continue, uh, the relationship.
Okay. The, I had some more questions here. So that, um, in your, in your proposal, you have, um, that annual increases would be based, would either be, um, 4% or CPI. So which one are you going to use?
Well, I think there was two things I, I, and, you know, maybe I wasn't, I wasn't clear and that's probably my fault. There were two things, um, and we, we used the water sewer trash index for CPI and that, that rate is typically around, you know, 3%. I think if we were to give a city a CPI based upon that index right now, it's, that, it's less than a percent. So we use the water sewer trash index, it's pretty, pretty common. And then the, the other one, um, it, it was glass. You know, I, I remember saying that, uh, we don't, we don't want glass because it's a negative commodity, but if it was something that was important to the city, you know, if it was a deal breaker not doing glasses recycling, you know, we would, we would recycle glass. So I don't, again, that's probably my fault for not being clear, um, that day during the, uh, interview.
Okay, well, the, the, the glass thing, since you brought it up, does have me concerned because because one of the big selling points back in November was that since you do all in one recycling, that the glass breaks, it contaminates the cardboard, and then when you have broken glass, it just runs the entire recycle load. So what are you going to do different if you're going to start taking glass?
Well, they all go to the same recyclery. It's a single stream recyclery to where, when, when you go, you dump the truck and then, you know, it gets sorted on a conveyor belt. You know, one of the things I would do if we started having issues where we saw contaminated loads, again, we have a great partnership with the city. We'd reach out and talk to those folks and, you know, because at the end of the day, you know, when, when residents put goods in a recycle can, they're wanting it to actually get recycled, not go to the landfill. You know, when, when, when loads are contaminated, you know, end up going to a recyclery, but then, you know, basically put off to the side and then taken to landfill because, you know, they're too contaminated to recycle. So, you know, again, we would, we'd work with our partners at the city and just like, you know, any other times we've, y'all have needed something from us or we've needed something from you all, which it's always seemed to, to work because we've had that great relationship for the past twenty years.
On the roll offs?
Yes, ma'am.
So you currently don't charge us for the roll offs now, but recently the city was told that you may have to consider charging for that. So are, I mean, if you're awarded the contract, are you going to start us off at zero and then six months later come back and say, oh gee, we messed up. We gotta, we gotta start charging for this now?
Well, I don't, David Aguilar is with me. I don't remember anyone saying we're going to charge you all for, for any of those, for, for the roll offs. You know, I think, again, I'll, I'll kind of go back and lean back to the partnership we've had with the city. You know, we've, we've asked for things. We've never told, we've never told Katy anything. You know, we, we've, we've asked for stuff and, you know, y'all have worked with us and then there's some things that, you know, y'all have said no on. So we would never presume to, to tell you all, you know, something that's, if it's not in the contract, we wouldn't, you know, demand y'all do something that wasn't in there. I mean, if we needed something just like anything else, we would ask. And if the city wanted to work with us, great. If not, you know, we, we'd move on to, to other issues, other items. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who told you that or it's first I'm hearing about it of having to, you know, charge you for services that we've given you for free in the past.
Okay.
It's actually not on here that you're charging us. It's listed at zero, actually.
Right. I, I understand that. Um, the other question, the other thing that showed up when I asked for the timeline is that there are cases where the, y'all never returned fully executed agreements. So back in February twenty eighteen, there was a resolution that was approved by council, actually in December twenty seventeen. And the city secretary said that they do not, they never receive fully executed agreements back from you guys. And then most recently, they're still waiting for paperwork from November of twenty nineteen, including the signed twelve ninety-five agreement, which is required by the Texas Ethics Commission. That's never been received. And then one other request that still hasn't been addressed was the request for access to your GIS service. That initial request was originally discussed back in August of twenty nineteen and to this date, they still don't have access to your truck routes by GIS. So customer service is kind of, though the residents were happy, city staff is having a few issues in dealing with you guys. So, um, and I'm really concerned about the twelve ninety-five agreement not being sent in since that's required by Texas Ethics Commission. So you have any comments on that?
Well, as far as, you know, the, again, David's with me over here in the corner here. He said, I mean.
I need you to speak up a little bit. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Yeah, David, he's with me. He's, he's telling me that, you know, he, he sent those, those documents in, the twelve ninety-five. You know, the other, I mean, I, obviously I know what the twelve ninety-five is. Any other documents that weren't fully executed, you know, I can definitely figure that out and get that done. I was unaware of that.
We never received, we never received the actual paperwork for the rate increase. We send examples of what we've used in the past, but we have to have some documentation on it. And, and I provided her with all of our requests, but I don't show where my office has received it.
Okay.
Question on the heavy trash, if I'm reading this correctly, from Texas Pride, you're going to do heavy trash every week? Is that correct?
Sir, that's correct. And with the, the three man crew, two guys on the back of the truck, if it's out next to the, to the garbage cart, our, our guys will pick that up along with the regular garbage.
Okay. So, so on your, on your proposal, Texas Pride, we are getting, we're getting more service because we're, everybody's, not only are you getting the weekly regular trash, you're also getting the weekly recycle and in addition to that, the weekly heavy trash. So that's a, that's an increase in service. So, okay, I'm good. I don't think I have any other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
I have some questions.
Oh, this is Frank. Can I ask one question real quick, Jennifer?
Sure, Frank. Go right ahead.
Since we're on the topic of paperwork, I, I didn't see in the packets, the three years of audited financials from Texas Pride. So this question to city staff, did we receive three years of audited financials as required by our RFP? Anyone can answer.
I'm sorry?
To city staff.
Yeah, I thought they did send three years of it in. We did a checklist. I actually went today and did not see it either. There were no audited financials, actually.
So I guess to Texas Pride, Kevin, did you all, did you provide three years of audited financials in response to the RFP?
So we did provide financials. With our growth over the last few years, this was the first year that our bank has actually required us to have audited financials. We are literally right at the end of that process. So definitely provide those if you need them. But just with our banking relationship with Comerica up until this year, it was never a requirement for us, but we do have them, we do have them now.
So not to put too fine of a point on this, but I, I am a trial lawyer. So that's a no to my question. You did not provide audited financials, true?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So question to city staff, if we didn't receive the paperwork as required by the RFP, how did this come to this point? And were there any other companies that were disqualified because they didn't submit paperwork? And if so, why were they disqualified and not others? Question to city staff.
Okay, I'll take that. So staff had a checklist. We went through that checklist. So I'm not sure why we're not having financials. Did you submit any type of financials to us at all? And I'm looking at my, I'm looking for my staff to answer that question.
Yes, there was financials for him. He said he, he did submit the financial for one year is what Kevin's.
Again, not to put too fine a point on this, but did our RFP say audited financials or did it just say financials or compiled financials? Because I mean, these words make a difference, right? They have meaning in, in the industry, in the banking world and the business world. So did our RFP say audited or did it say financials? I don't recall. I slept since I read it, but.
It says audited.
Question to city staff.
It says audited.
Question to city staff. City staff?
I'm looking. I just can't remember every single thing.
Jennifer, do you know where that is in that RFP?
Yes, it's under section seven of the RFP.
Section seven?
Yes. What, what Kevin provided was a balance sheet, a balance statement and a P and L that ended in December of nineteen, but nothing for three years and nothing that was audited by a CPA firm.
I have to go back to Frank's position on that too and say, we're asking for RFP and we're putting that out there. And maybe we just looked at the financials and said they're financials, but if they're not, I'll use financials. You got to figure out how to, Art, are you on the line?
I'm, I'm on the line. Yes, yes, I'm, I'm on the line. And that's, we just have to take a look. If it says the audited financials, we need to look, look at that. It was, it was my understanding in it when I glanced at, as for the financials, but we just have to see if it says, if it says audited financials, then that's, that's one of the requirements, that it have audited, audited financials.
And I want to be clear, this is not some academic exercise. Audited financials, well, well, Kevin looks like a trustworthy person and I'm not saying he's not. These are companies and when you put something in a compiled financial report, you don't have a second set of eyes. It's why the city goes through an audit every year. And so when we're talking about the financial wherewithal to provide the largest service to the city that we provide, it's important that we nail down these numbers and make sure that there's veracity to the numbers. And so if we ask for audited financials and we received non-audited financials, then it doesn't seem like it complied with the RFP. And so it's something that I'd like to explore. So I think we should have the questions, everything. But at the end of this, I'm going to ask that we table this so that we can see whether or not it provided for audited financials, whether we got those and whether the process was complied with in this case. So I'm not going to call for it yet. I'm just giving you a preview of coming attractions. That's all I've got.
Kevin, do you have three years of audited financial?
The, yeah, the financials that we provided were reviewed. Like I said, this was the first year that we've got the audited financials. That process is essentially complete, so I should be able to provide those for you guys.
Which one are you?
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right, I guess I can move forward with my questions. Um, so Kevin, can you tell me what's the largest community that you currently service at this time?
Yes, absolutely. It's Clearbrook City MUD. They're about fifty-six hundred homes down on the southeast side of Houston Beltway and forty-five.
And I noticed that you've got the contract for Alvin, so congratulations. What type of impact we're bringing in on financially have on you?
So as far as the, the capital that's required, again, we use Comerica for our, for our banking relationship. Comerica actually has a solid waste line where they deal specifically with companies like ours. They bank about a hundred and twenty-five solid waste companies across the country. And with that, they've got a very good understanding of how our business works. And unlike a traditional bank, on a leverage ratio, Comerica's got a very good understanding that our business is very capital intensive. And so our, our lending capability is essentially based off of how well we perform with them. And so for, for every dollar of EBITDA we generate, we essentially get three dollars of lending capacity with them. And so with putting on a contract like Katy or putting on a contract like Alvin or putting on a hundred home HOA or MUD, as long as we're performing, we're essentially generating, you know, a larger line for us to draw from as we continue to grow. So we've been with Comerica for three years now. It's been a great relationship and their understanding of our business has made things, the last three years have been the best three years of our, of our banking relationship since we've, since we've been in business.
Okay. Um, so without seeing your financials, Frank asked the same question I was going to ask you about audited financials. So one of my concerns, one is that my background is banking and finance for twenty-nine years. And so I wanted, I was the girl that went into the meeting, wanted to see financials and, and look at all of that. But one of the concerns that I have is that you have a current pending litigation going on. And so my concern is depending on what the outcome of that is, without seeing your financials, I don't know what your financial picture looks like, to know that you're going to be able to stay in business and support our city.
Right. And that's a good point. We, we've got insurance in place for, for these types of situations. Now, I, I can't speak much on, on the litigation itself. Obviously, it's under investigation right now. It's still a, still an open matter. But I also wouldn't be here, you know, proposing to put a million dollars worth of capital out in the city if, if I didn't feel there was a, you know, high risk that that could be an issue for us down the road. The last thing that we want to do is come into the city and then leave you guys high and dry.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. All right. I think that's all my questions for you. Joey, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to go back to one of the interview questions that I think Janet brought up, but it was in regards to the glass. So I went in and, and listened today to the interview questions between both of the companies. And that question number eleven was the question that everyone's asking, which was, you know, residents have asked to reinstate the glass in the recycling program. Is this an option? And so what was recorded down was the word no. I will tell you, when I went in and listened to it today, to be honest, you guys never said the word no. You didn't say the word yes. It was just kind of skirted around. And so what kept it, what you kept stating was that glass was a negative commodity and that glass has negative value. So I just want to come back and re-ask that question that I think we've kind of touched on. But I thought you said that you would now do glass. I'm just, I'm laying this out on the table and asking again to make sure we all have a clear understanding of where we are on that question.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, if it's important to the city, we'll, we'll do, we'll do glass. I was just, if we had a choice, we would choose not to. But if it's something that's important to, you know, the City of Katy and the residents, you know, it's something we can do for sure.
Can you tell me just a little bit? I know that you guys have had the contract with the city for twenty years and we've had the same representative for fifteen. Can you tell me more? Like, I don't think the citizens really know, like, what y'all's involvement is in the community, not just on the recycling. So can you maybe give us some history of how you've been involved in the community and maybe how you guys have given back to the community?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. So we've, we've been with this, I've, I've been doing this, say, for the last fifteen years. We, we, we try to communicate, we try to do everything for the city. We do the Katy Rice Festival. We're very, we help the keep Katy beautiful people. We're very active in the chamber. And going back, I think somebody talked about the roll offs earlier and I was going to comment. The roll offs, the only roll off that the city actually gets for free is the one at Public Works and it's, it's on call. And the only mention that I had made, so I think I mentioned to Jason and to Elaine this year, and I don't know if I talked to Byron about it or not, I can't remember, but it used to go maybe once or twice a month at, at, at the most, but then since y'all bought your street sweeper, I mean, that thing goes, it's on call once a week every Monday. And in this, in this new RFP that went out, that was, it was, it was part of the RFP to where it is scheduled for at least once a week. But that's the only thing I've ever mentioned about roll offs or charging for roll offs. I think we had a couple of events in the last, Casey called me a couple of weeks ago about the, the visitor center. They were doing some cleanups. I went ahead and donated a roll off to that. Elaine called me, they were tearing down this building at the park across street. I gave them the roll off for that. I mean, we, and we do, I mean, I think I go to a lot of the city bands. I try to show up to many council meetings as possible, just to say hi to you guys because I don't see the council very often. But I mean, we are very active in the city and we have been for a very long time.
Thank you for.
So let's go back to the glass. You're saying that you, you will redo the glass if, if, if necessary. I don't see what's different. You haven't told me what's going to be different now versus what it was back in November when you needed a rate increase because you couldn't recycle the glass. So you increased the rate and you stopped taking glass. I don't see, I don't see how you're going to handle it differently. I think we're going to be right back where we were in November.
Well, no, ma'am. I mean, you know, again, you know, whether you recycle with, with Republic or you recycle with Texas Pride or whoever, it's all done the same way. It really all matters what people put in to the can. It's, we all, we all recycle things the same way. There's no one using. It's, we all, we all recycle things the same way. There's no one using a different type of method. You know, one of the things we, we needed to make a change, we needed, recycling went backwards. We, we asked for some help from the city, and the city graciously said yes, and, you know, we appreciate that. And there's some things we've asked the city for that y'all said no for, and we, we understand that too. Again, you know, I don't, I lean, I look at that more as a, as a positive thing, where we've, we've built a relationship to where we came beyond, we needed something, and you said yes. And, you know, city staff could have said no, and we would have continued on the same way we would have been. But again, I kind of, I, I look at that more of a, as a positive, maybe than a negative, that we, we had something we, we needed help with, and we worked together in partnership to get it done. And I did have, you know, when Mr. Harris was speaking about the additional service that Texas Pride would be offering because they're running rear-load trucks, it's, you know, we're running automated side-load and rear-load the same, the same day. So we're going to be, you're going to be getting just as much service. You know, now, you're correct, if, you know, we were doing your, your, your side-load on a different day than your bulk or your green waste, that would be, I guess, a different scenario. It really all comes down to how much tons we're picking up out of the city. You know, one of the advantages of a side-load is you, it's pretty easy to gauge how much, you know, your residents are putting out. You can, when you pick up a trash can and you dump it in ASL, you can get 10 tons easy out of a truck before you, you know, before you get school and you have to take it to the landfill. When you're picking up bulk or green waste, those items don't compact well. And you don't really ever know how much bulk or green waste people are going to put out. You know, some people will put out their 15 bags, some will put out none. Somebody will have a mattress, or somebody will have a couch. So we're probably, if, whether it's, you know, Texas Pride, or Republic, or whoever, if they're, whoever, whichever company's going to be servicing you essentially three days a week, they're probably going to be running pretty close to the same number of routes because it's really based upon tonnage. So, and, you know, there are some pros and cons to both ASL and rear-load, you know. And I think with the way we've got it set up for you all, on how we're going to be running the rear-load the same day, we're probably going to be running pretty close to the same amount of routes as, as Kevin and team. And, you know, get you picked up and serviced. So the service levels will be the exact same. It's just kind of two different ways of getting it done.
Okay. First, I've heard of you auditing rear-load. I'm sorry, Chris, can I, can I ask the same last question of Kevin, and then I'll, I'll, I'll give you a chance. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. So is this the, is this the glass question, or is this the...
Yeah, yeah. Because in your, in your proposal, it's mentioned that you have an agreement, I think it was with Budweiser or somebody, to take the glass bottles for recycling. So how, how do you handle that?
So the facility that we take our recycling to is called Independent Texas, they're off of 610 in Irvington. And they've got a, at their facility, as Joey mentioned, the recycling comes in on one truck. It gets dumped out on the ground, and it goes through the sort system. And as it goes through the sort system, the different materials and fibers get pulled out and separated. So you have a clean set of cardboard, and you've got a clean set of plastic. At the end of the ITR's line, they've got this, this glass. And then they've also got a glass processing facility in which those pieces go separated by color. And then they've got deals set up for that glass to get processed on the backside. The Budweiser comment, that, that is 80% of the material process. It goes to the Budweiser facility on the east side of town to be turned back into essentially beer bottles for the most part. But that's where, as far as that commodity, that's where the vast majority of ITR's glass goes.
If, if I may, I've pulled the RFP part, and we have a public question that you may need the reference for to answer. It says, "In financial responsibility, proposer must submit sufficient information to demonstrate financial capacity to handle a contract for the services described within this RFP. Examples of documentation that may fulfill this requirement include, but are not limited to, audited financial statements for the last three years." Trevor Royal, who is on the Zoom chat, has asked if the audited financial statement was not provided at the time of the RFP, shouldn't Texas Pride be disqualified?
Can you read that, what, what it said again?
I can actually, I can share my screen as well. Hold on.
If you go to the Q and A on the bottom right, you can click on it, and the question is provided there.
Were you saying that, or were you talking about that section of the...
I wanted to see the section that you read.
Let me share my screen.
Was that in the Q and A?
No.
No, it's not. Just the question was.
Yeah, let me see about sharing my screen.
That was an example. Is that what is some reading here? It says, "an example of..." "...that may fulfill." So they did submit financial statement, just not the three.
That was an example. And it wasn't audited.
Okay, I'm having trouble reading this, but you, you did say it was examples are not limited, could include, but not limited to audited financials.
The wrong string's up there right now.
Sorry, I had it on that super tall screen, and it distorts it where people can't read it. Now hopefully you can read it better.
Yes.
Hey, Becky, could you remove Art from you on your end? He's trying to talk. Art, are you on?
I unmuted him.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Now, I've been, I've been just screaming. In, in the language, in the language in the RFP, it just gives examples. It clearly says, these, these, that the financial, demonstrate financial capacity to handle a, a contract. It gives examples. It doesn't say that, that's the only thing you can use. It says, "these are examples of things you can use to demonstrate financial capacity to handle a contract." So, so when, and I just saw Mr. Rose, it's to answer Mr. Rose's question, the answer to Mr. Rose's question is no. It should not be disqualified. What the council will have to decide, when, as is deciding on these proposals, whether or not the council believes that, that it, that company has submitted financial, demonstrated financial capacity to handle a contract. Based on the information that was submitted, that's what the council would, would have to decide. But it does not disqualify them, in my opinion, reading the, reading the language that was required in the request for proposal.
So Art, my question is, what about item two, that is certified by a firm of independent certification?
If, if they're, if the latest financial, the latest financial statement, they would, they would need, they need to submit that.
But that's what we're saying, that wasn't...
It was my understanding that they said they had submitted the financial statement. It was the audited, I think Mr. Carroll's question was regarding the audited financials. Are you saying, saying that you have another question separate from the audited financial?
Yes, the financials that were provided were not by certified independent firm.
Well, that's a question. Were, were, were the financial statements certified by a, by a firm of independent certified public accountants? That's a question to Kevin.
So the, the financials we submitted, they were reviewed. I would have to get the details on who they were reviewed from, from my CFO. But the last year's 18's financials, no, I'm sorry, 19, 18's financials were reviewed, our 19 financials are the ones that that audit is almost complete on.
Okay. I guess question to city staff, did we receive certified financial statements? Reviewed is, is good. That's a good start. It doesn't say reviewed in the RFP. It says certified, which again, these words mean something. Otherwise, we wouldn't have put them in our RFP. Did we receive certified financial statements?
Okay, if somebody can check in that, and we'll, so, so, so we're moving, we're moving away from the three years financials and looking for, for documents that shows whether this year's financials were certified. Correct? Is that what we're looking for?
I think we need to have a discussion about the, whether or not un-audited financial statements are evidence of anything, much less financial viability to service a million-dollar-per-year contract from a company that is in litigation and has seven years of history. I'm not saying that they can't. I love the fact that there's a new company. I love the fact there's competition. I think Texas Pride's doing great things, and I've heard nothing but good things. But our obligation, quasi-fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers of the city of Katy, is to ensure that we have trash service that is provided by a company that has the financial wherewithal to complete this contract. And so if we got un-audited financials, then we're going to require more for residents to get water service than we are requiring this company to get a million-dollar company, contract out of the city. And that doesn't seem right to me. But my second question is whether or not we actually receive the minimum documentation under our RFP. And so I'd like an answer to whether or not we have certified financial statements. And that is my second question.
Okay. All right, let me, let me do this, if I will, council, council member. The first question, let me say, that's, that's an issue for the council, and I understand you want that information. That's what you need. The, the second question, if I can get staff to, to pull those documents and see, that's, that's the document that's more germane, the, the question more germane to staff, do we have something that shows that, that the, the financials that Texas Pride submitted have been reviewed and by, and, and signed off by a certified public accountant?
Yes, that you have accurately stated my questions. I will add a third question since we're here. Because you just said that it's not disqualifying, did we disqualify other companies for failing to provide the required documentation? And if so, did we give them an opportunity to cure by providing the documentation prior to disqualifying them? That's a question to you and city staff as well.
Okay. I, I don't think the people that were, if it's disqualified, if the question is disqualified, the only people who were disqualified were the ones that submitted the hazardous waste. They were disqualified. Whether or not somebody was, was ranked higher, which is not a disqualification, we'd have to look into that. But as far as the disqualification period, I would, I think that only came about based on somebody who, who did not, who was submitting a hazardous waste.
Our best trash was because they did not meet the checklist, because they only submitted, they only submitted a portion of the packet. They had, they had missed the majority of everything. So yes, they were not reviewed.
Yeah, they sent a letter, and I can't think of who.
No proposal.
No proposal.
Okay, so we're talking about paperwork. I'd also like to know, before we go any further, if Republic did indeed submit, send in those executed documents that cannot be found, and the 1295 agreement. So we've got, sounds like we have some paperwork issues on both sides.
Yeah, and while we're compiling that, if there's any information regarding follow-up, because it sounds like an issue that was 2017. So if we went two and a half years of not requesting it, and then brought it at the time of the public meeting, that's something that probably should, should come to light. So if there's any correspondence from the city with Republic following up on those requests, I'd like to see that as well before I vote on this.
And we have that, we can provide it.
Hey, council, council member, council members, if I could, there are, there are at least two pending questions that, that would require staff to do some, some research, research on to respond. What I, what I would, what I would ask if, if council's indulgent, if, if you would allow us, if you can go through whatever other questions that you have that would require us to, to dig up some paperwork, if you could present those to us, and let us bring those back to you prior to you, to you acting on it. Because I think, I think these are issues that you guys would, would want to know the answers to prior to, prior to voting on. And that's just my recommendation on this. I think it, it'll make it, make it a much cleaner process when you do decide which, which company you want to take. That if you would list out those questions, not the questions that, you know, go through your regular process, but on those, those questions that would require documentation from staff and responses from staff, documented response from staff, if you could give us an, state those, and let us bring those back to you before you actually take, take a vote.
Understood.
Any other questions from council, besides the two we have?
Real quick on emergency response from Texas Pride, do y'all have a plan to provide emergency services in the event of the hurricane? Do y'all have the staffing availability?
Yeah, so an event like that, there's a handful of groups that we use currently that can rent equipment, so they can rent additional rear-load trucks, they can rent additional grapple-style trucks, roll-offs for that type of work. We also partner with a, essentially a cleanup group. We cleaned up the entire city of East Bernard in 2018, when the hurricane came through there. The county was slow to react. They reached out to us, we did the cleanup for them. So, you know, additional resources, our partnerships with those groups that, that rent that type of equipment, that's at our fingertips. We, we also work with groups that can supply drivers and labors almost instantaneously. With the city Houston contract last year, when we assisted them with their recycling services, we were awarded the contract on January 16th, and we had to have 10 trucks and 30 employees in place by February 1st. And we hit the ground running with that. So we partner with the, the groups that would allow us to, to react quickly for, for something like that.
Okay. And back to Republic, I, you lost me on the, on the answer on the man truck in the back. You were, the, the, the way you provide service is going to be different than what Texas Pride is proposing. Is that correct?
Yes, but also the same. And also, so you, we were going to be running this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, you're a little muffled. So we're going to, we are going to be running an ASL truck through there, but we're also going to be running a rear-load truck. To be, because we're doing the bulk and the, we're doing the bulk and, and the green waste, and, and then, you know, the household trash all in the same day. You know, and again, really, it comes down to tonnage. Whether you're running rear-load trucks or ASL trucks, we're probably going to be running pretty close to the same amount of routes since we're doing it on the same day. Again, there's some, each, each thing has a little bit of, you know, pros and cons. I would say one of the cons would be is if we were doing, if we were doing Katie's household trash on like a Tuesday, and we were doing their bulk on a Thursday, well, then we'd have two different service days. We'd be driving by there. So yeah, doing a, doing an ASL, or doing a rear-load truck with helpers on the back, you know, getting it all in one swoop would be, you know, I guess you'd have less folks driving by. But since we are all doing it all on the same day, again, it really just comes down to, to tonnage. And, you know, and I guess the pros of the ASL is, you know, right now during the pandemic, it only takes one person to operate that truck. And then when you have to have two to three, you have to have two helpers or a driver to operate a rear-load truck, well, you need three people to pick up the trash. So, you know, I'm sure, just like everyone else is throughout the country and throughout, I guess throughout the world, everyone's dealing with COVID-19 right now. And, you know, the garbage men and women, you know, we aren't immune. You know, we've had some instances here, and, you know, it's been relatively seamless to our, our customers because, you know, it is, it is nice having the availability, just to need one person to operate the ASL truck to, to pick up the stuff that's, you know, in your, in your trash can. So that's really the only difference. So to your point, yes, if we were doing it on two different days, we'd have to, we'd have to send, we'd have, Kevin could get it all in one fell swoop, or we'd... we'd have to send, we'd have, Kevin could get it all in one fell swoop, where we'd have a second service day. But since we are picking up everybody's trash and recycling all in the same days, it's going to be pretty similar, except we're picking up the poly carts with an arm and he'll be using manpower. And we'll be getting the bulk, the green waste with, with, you know, helpers on the back of the rearload trucks.
Okay. And then same question for you on the emergency response. I know you've worked with us before, but can you just give us a little detail of like, what's your response in the event of a hurricane? Are we going to be, you have a bunch of big contracts elsewhere? How are we going to be at the top of your list?
Well, the great thing about Republic, big company, the first day we could open up after Harvey, we were, we were hitting the streets. Our company threw in, or flew in 100 people, you know, drove in 80 trucks and we had, you know, over 1,500 roll-off boxes delivered. And again, I won't stand on my soapbox too long. I've been with this company six years. They treat their people better than anyone I've ever seen, ever. We had our CEO fly down and he had an armed guard with him, you know, he had duffel bag full of cash handed out to employees that were affected, put people up in long-term, short-term housing. Our company goes a long way, does a lot for our folks. And because of our size and scope, you know, they were able to bring in drivers from all over the United States, flying trucks. And yeah, we do have a lot of big contracts. And I think that's also kind of, you know, when you're dealing with a company Republic size, that is kind of one of the perks you get is, you know, we have, we have the assets, the manpower, and really the buying power to make things happen in a time of crisis.
Okay, thank you. And Elaine, a termination clause on our contract, on this contract that we're getting, you know, we're making a better contract, what is our termination for either, either party that we might go to?
That would be negotiated with the term, but in our termination, we do, it was in there. I think it's got 30 days. There is a termination clause in there for either party, 30 days.
I can help you on that. Normally, normally what we will negotiate and what is, what is normal in there is that in standard is that there will be a termination clause and then you, they would have a chance to cure. They'll have either 30 days or six days in order to cure. Once, once we get to the point where we would, we would require termination or request that they be terminated would be, it's either be terminated unless they cure the issue. There is, there's very rare that you would have a contract for services like this where there's an automatic termination without a chance to cure.
Okay, okay.
We have another public comment from Trevor Royal. If neither of these two companies provided all required documents, would both be disqualified and the next qualified better be awarded the agreement?
No, no, the council, the council will decide which entity they believe serves in the best interest of the city. These are requests for proposals, not bids. I know we've been using the term bid and proposal interchangeably, but they are not. These proposals are items that is a service that does not have to be, have to be bid. It's a service that the, that the council went through a request for proposal to determine which, which company or companies they believe serve the interest of the city of Katy best. So if the council wanted to move to a third one or to not to choose either one of these two, the council could do so. If the council decides to choose one of these, they could do so. If they decided to say, we're going to throw all these away and we're going to get, going to get Pertile Sentitation Company to come in and do that, they have the option to do that.
I have a question for Republic. And also we'll follow up with Texas Pride, Republic. Joey?
Yes, sir.
What, what fuel source are your trucks running on?
We run a combination out of this location diesel. My location further southwest, primarily CNG.
Okay.
Clean natural gas.
Right, right. Also a follow-up question to the glass. Are you, did you say you were recycling the glass or the glass was going to landfill?
No, we recycle. I mean, we, we take stuff to ITR as well, same place Kevin does. And we take things to our facility and also waste management. I mean, really, the thing about single stream residential recycling is, you know, the poly carts and the cans, they're not clear. So you really can't see what's being dumped in there. And it only takes, you know, there's a certain amount of the threshold that recycle centers use to determine whether or not the whole load's contaminated. And really without someone getting out and looking in every single, you know, poly cart, it's tough to see what is and isn't recycled, what isn't and isn't contaminated. So a lot of times you won't know until the load is dumped. And at that time, you know, the recycle center will make the choice on whether or not it can be recycled or not. And if it can't be, then they, they do charge us for that. It is definitely, a contaminated load is a lot more expensive than just normal recycling. So the recycle centers will make, make that call. Because obviously if they can't recycle it, they can't, they can't turn the good into any type of revenue.
Okay. And same, same question, a follow-up with Texas Pride. What, what type of trucks will you be operating if you were awarded this contract? What would be the fuel source?
Sir, our fleet is all diesel right now.
All diesel?
Yes, sir.
Do you have plans to go with, with clean natural gas?
If that's something that you guys are interested in, we can always look at it. At this time, when, when CNG came out, you know, late 2000s, the popularity of it really struck a chord. When fuel hit $5 a gallon and CNG cost a buck fifty equivalent, it's much more difficult to make those financial decisions right now when the cost equivalent of the two is, is pretty close to the same. But the infrastructure, Republic has a great infrastructure at their, at their fonder facility, but it's, it's very expensive to put that type of infrastructure in. There are natural gas fueling stations around town that are open to the public. It would require modifications to our shop as well. But from, from right now, we don't have plans at this time to, to move towards CNG. Again, if that's something that you guys would want to look at though, we can definitely look at it for you.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Hey, I'd like to just point out in running the numbers, I'm sure you guys have already looked at it. But so when we're breaking it down to price per household per year, we're looking at a difference of $16.80 per family per year. So I know earlier Janet came up with a number in the 300,000s. I'm not sure where that number came from. But when I multiply it out, it's the difference for the city, it's not really for the city, but for the residents in whole is $106,411. So I think the question we need to kind of ask ourselves is, is it worth making these changes for $16.80 a year per family? When we've got a-
I based, I based it on the current rate that they're charging us now.
Oh, well, I wouldn't run it on the current because we don't have the price, that's not going to be the pricing starting in September. So-
Right. But I also question how, I'm still concerned that they were able to drop their prices on low. And I'm concerned that they're going to come back and in a matter of time bump us up back to close to where they are now.
So are you not Texas Pride pricing?
I have a question for Joey.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the, the issues that we hear from our residents a lot are, is the missed trash. So if you're going to be running two trucks, one with the sidearm, and then you're going to follow it up with a truck, you know, with the rear load and two guys, then does that mean they're going to also pick up the cans that were missed because of blocked cars and that type of thing? Because right now we have a resident that called today that trash was missed on Friday. They're having trouble getting a hold of Republic and their trash still hasn't been picked up. So we get those, we get those comments a lot.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you, we don't make any products. So we're, we're 100% of service industry. So, you know, our, our goal is to provide, you know, the service that, you know, customers want and that they pay for. You know, I, as far as, you know, picking up things that are, you know, I would think that, and I'd have to get a list for my folks and then maybe work with some, some people in staff to, to get a little bit more accurate numbers. I do know that, you know, when, when you've got 6,000 residents, you know, unfortunately, you know, there's late set outs, there are things that come up. You know, what I always tell my team is we need to exhaust every possible option. And then if, if something does happen, let's make it right with, with the resident. I mean, we're, we're never, we're never going to be perfect. I wish we could be. But it just in reality, no, you know, whether it's Texas Pride or Republic or whoever, I mean, there's going to be issues that come up. I think it's really how you deal with them. So I don't know the specifics on this one. But I can tell you that our goal is, is to offer, you know, excellent tier one service because, you know, that's really all we have to offer. We don't make iPhones or anything like that. We just sell a service. So if people are unhappy or upset or some things we can do better, heck yeah, we'll fix it. I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, I don't, I don't have the specifics on, on that.
Okay, thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor, I think Jennifer missed, Councilmember Stock, I don't think she was done. I think she has some more questions.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, I was interrupted. I kind of lost my train of thought now. One, I wanted to go back to Joey and just address what he just talked about. I mean, we're all in the service industry and there's always going to people, going to be people that we upset. What I love that the city did was send that survey out and 40% of the residents responded. And out of that, 78% of the people were satisfied with the service. That to me, those are huge numbers. And I just want to thank you guys for what you do. I know that we have a representative in the community that is always available when people call or have a problem. He goes to their house and he, he takes care of it. And to me, a 20-year relationship and to have a relationship with him with the city for 15 years goes a long way. So thank you for what you guys have been doing. I appreciate it.
This is Frank Carroll. Has everyone picked the bones clean on this? Because I'm going to, I'm going to move to tag this for to gather more information. I think that's what the purpose of tagging is for. And so I'm, I'm going to do that, but I'm not going to do it until everyone has had an opportunity to fully pick the bones off the carcass.
Question before you do that, Councilmember Carroll.
The meat off the carcass. Sorry, sorry. That was, I want you to get the meat, leave the bones.
Before you tag it, maybe this is a hard question. Should we table it? So that way if we want to bring it back earlier, because if a council member tags it, it has to go to the next regular meeting, which will not be until late July. But if we table it, we could bring it back for another special meeting. So what would-
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the distinction as well. I don't, I mean, art can weigh in, but I think we all agree that that is the procedure. So if this is something that we'd want to bring back sooner, then I'll just move the table and I won't tag it.
And I'll second your-
Sorry, Art. Sorry, Art.
What I was going, what I was going to suggest is not table, but just direct staff to bring this item back at the, at the next available meeting. And that way you don't, you're not worrying about whether you, you've used up your procedural tag or whatever, because there are some questions the staff needs to respond to council. If you just ask us to bring it back at the, at the next meeting, then we can, we'll do that.
I think Chris's concern is that the next meeting is three weeks out if we tag it.
July 27.
If we table it, it can be picked up from the table. Or I could even, if I tag it, it's going to be the next meeting. I understand. If we table it, it can be untabled, it can be tabled to the next meeting, not the next regular meeting, just to the next, just the next meeting. And that's what my motion is going to be. It's going to be table. It's going to be table. I'm going to go ahead and do it because now we're off track. I moved to table this discussion until the next meeting and also ask that city staff bring back the requested information. And of course, it's not part of the motion, but advice with Art, as Art has advised us, we will send those questions to city staff so they can get that information to us. So that's my motion.
Okay, I'm having a really hard time hearing. What I've got is the Councilman Carroll has made a motion to table this until the next meeting and giving staff a chance to do a little further research and bring some information back. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All vote same side. Okay, item eight was tabled. At this time, it's 7:25 and we will be moving into executive session, closed meeting. Executive session as authorized by chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending litigation, attorney-client privilege information. So we will be leaving this zone and going into another one.
Yes.
Okay, just checking the audio.
Is everybody back?
Yes.
I don't see Frank.
I am here, present and accounted for.
I show all of council is back on the call, Mayor.
Okay. Right at this time, we will open the meeting back up to the public at 7:54. Item number nine is consider any action deemed necessary as a result of executive session.
Mr. Mayor, motion to accept settlement with Gregory Butler and direct the city administrator to take appropriate action.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number ten, council members' reports. I'm going to start with Councilman Dowdell.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I hope everyone had a wonderful Fourth of July and had spent some time with your family. If you haven't already spent plenty of time with them due to our local circumstances. But that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Stockton.
And I too hope everyone had a great Fourth of July and that you enjoyed the fireworks. I'd also like to thank Brian and the mayor for the luncheon that we had on Wednesday, where they came up with the idea that we needed to go back and pray for all the pastors that had prayed for us, for the city and everything that our community's going through. And this luncheon we went to on Wednesday was so powerful. So I just want to thank you guys for putting that together. It was amazing and I was super excited to be a part of it. So thanks and everybody have a great week.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Councilman Harris.
Last Thursday, did a ride along with KDPD and had a very interesting time, learned a lot of information. And want to thank Chief Diaz for organizing that for me. I appreciate that. And also I noticed in my water bill, congratulations to Public Works and the Water Department. They got another superior rating and I believe that's 32 years straight for the city of Katy, highest rating. So thank you Elaine and all of Public Works and Water Department. I appreciate that. Great service for the city of Katy. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll.
Just want to say thank you to the residents of Katy. We received great reports from the police department regarding the Fourth of July celebration and folks doing what they could in order to comply with the safety protocols. It was a difficult decision. It was a very detailed, thought-out decision to go forward and required the city to join with us and partner with us in order to keep our city staff and the residents safe. And you did that. And so I want to thank everyone for doing that, for partnering with us in order to ensure that we had this great celebration and a partial return to normalcy in Katy. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Corr.
Well, there's not much left. I just want to echo what Jennifer said about the thing with the pastors. That was wonderful. And I agree with what Frank said. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, my report's going to be real quick and easy. I'd like to thank city staff for what they did on the waste disposal contract. I think they put a lot of work into it. Hopefully we can get this rectified, you know, possibly the next meeting. Other than that, I'd like to thank the community for all they're doing to try to help curb this COVID virus. Hopefully we can continue forward and one day be able to tell stories to great-grandkids about the trials and tribulations that we've been through in the last three or four months. So anyways, thank y'all all as council for your support and your help. I appreciate that. And we will persevere. So everybody have a great and wonderful evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we get a motion to adjourn, I just want to read a public comment for the record. Of course, it would have been under public comments, so staff and council cannot respond. But we did receive in the chat window at 6:35 PM from J.D. Shuck, the statement was, has the mayor's office addressed the dam safety inspection report? And that's D-A-M, dam. That was sent May 21st. What is the status of the state required emergency action plan as required by Texas Ethics Commission of Environmental Quality? And this statement will of course be reflected in the future minutes under public comments submitted via Zoom chat. And that's all.
Very good. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Y'all have a wonderful evening, or what's left.
You do the same. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.